I'd like to call this February 8th council meeting to order. A work session, please stay in the room until all of those who passed away during the month. Please salute the flag.
The President's to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to have Councilman Cattroci do the minutes tonight since nobody's here. So he'll do the best he can to get everything down. So you want to do roll call, Louie?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Cullen?
Here.
Mr. Pezza?
Here.
Mr. Devine?
Here.
Mr. Gerory?
Present.
Mr. Blerman?
Present.
Which group is here? Mr. DeGussetti?
Here.
And Mrs. Rodriguez is not here.
Mrs. Rodriguez, until she gets, I guess, the vaccine, she just can't take a chance with her asthma and things like that, so she's been calling in and trying to be updated constantly with the mantra of what's going on. I know we're having a problem with Comcast with the channel, but they say that the voice is fine, probably something with the weather, we're waiting for Comcast to get back to us. And they say Verizon is working fine, so I really don't know. This time I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cattroci, wants to introduce a couple people.
Okay. This morning when I looked at the paper, there was an article about a World War II veteran who survived who survived World War II and the attack on Pearl Harbor. And he's now in a quandary because he hasn't got the vaccine. And there was talk about his daughters and the things they're trying to do to get these vaccines. So I know there's a lot of confusion out there. I had Mike Mott, the executive director, Lower Bux Hospital. He presented a little presentation to the Rotary Club and it cleared a lot of things up. So I called Mike this morning and unfortunately, well, he's down in South Carolina, but he was able to, he asked me if Lea Rodriguez and Lorena Rodriguez could take his place. Lea's the chief nursing officer and Lorena is the public relations director, community relations director. So I just, I wanted, I asked them if they could come and just give us a brief update on the vaccine and on the hospital's involvement in this because there's so many questions. So I'd like to introduce Lea and Lorena. They're both Rodriguezes, but they're not sisters.
Yes, that's correct. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So we've been providing vaccines at Lower Bux since December of last year. And we have progressively been giving vaccines to police EMS or healthcare workers at Lower Bux. We've now opened up to our Lower Bux family who meet the 1A criteria. So let me explain what the 1A criteria is. So the 1A criteria, do you remember when the governor went from, the 1A criteria was the 65 and over and then the 16 to 64 with certain conditions? He moved them from 1B all the way to 1A real quick and we were like, oh my God, do we have enough vaccine? And that's what we're in the process of taking care of right now. So our Lower Bux family, so we've opened up to our staff and their family, their immediate family that meet that 1A criteria. So the 1A criteria, it comes with a whole bunch of certain conditions. So it says it's 16 to 64 that meet certain conditions. And it says it like cancer, immunocompromised states, COPD, smoking, all that other stuff. And then it says 65 and over. So that's who we're currently treating today. And we are finishing all the other 1A criteria, which is the healthcare workers, the dental offices, the chiropractors offices, some of the RNs from the schools. And then what we're steadily trying to do is open it up to the high-risk teachers as well as that population of the 16 to 64 and 65 that meet that 1A criteria. We'll be hopefully trying to do that if we have enough vaccine and in about two weeks. So, you know, steadily, we've reached at least like 180 at one time in one day. So in a week, we do about 1,000 vaccines. And again, what we try to do is if we schedule everyone, we ensure that everyone has to come. And what we do is when we receive vaccine, we ensure that if you come for your first dose, because it is Pfizer, we will guarantee that you will have the second dose and we schedule you for the second dose. Because as much as they're saying on television, oh, you can wait six weeks for your second dose, we don't want to do that. We want to ensure that your first dose ensures that you've got a second dose. Because the first dose is only 54% effective. With the second dose, that's when it becomes 94 to 95% effective. And that's what we want. And that's how we're going to get everybody, you know, with the herd immunity. So again, we will continue to vaccinate as many, everyone that we can. I wish that we had enough vaccine that we could vaccinate everyone and not have any criteria whatsoever. But unfortunately, we are being audited by the state as well. So when they tell us that they're 16 to 64 and they have certain conditions, we don't just take it for granted that you're a smoker or that you have an immunocompromised state. We ask for something from your physician's office or from a portal, you know, that you were in a hospital, that you have a history of this, that, and the other thing. So we kind of prove it out. And then when we register and we put all the information in for the state, they know that we are honestly doing the right thing as per their instructions and their guidelines. So again, you know, it's a tedious process. We have gotten B-Chip to help us, which is the Bux County Health Initiative project. So they were helping us to schedule people. Because when I tell you that there's at least 150 people that call per five minutes, that's how many people call. And I know people are desperate and I feel really bad, but at the same token, there's only so much vaccine that we're given. So again, you know, Lower Bux is dedicated to ensuring that we get on our way to vaccinate everyone and to get us to get rid of this horrible virus. We are on the front line and we see exactly what happens with COVID and it is not a nice thing. It's not a nice thing for the families either because we don't allow them in the hospitals and they can't see their poor family members. So again, it's our duty to make sure that we do the right thing for all the community. So we'll get that done.
Lou?
Yes.
First of all, I want to thank Louie for reaching out today to Mike and Lorena and Lea to come here. I mean, Louie's been on the hospital board for 30 years, so it shows you how much he's dedicated to that hospital and to the people of this town. And myself, I've been in numerous meetings with Lea and Lorena and the CEO from the hospital. And I'm fighting every day, and Lea will tell you that, for the residents of Bristol Borough.
Absolutely.
I mean, at one point, you know, Dr. Damsker was asking Lower Bux to send some vaccines up county and this and that. And, you know, my argument was, why would we send our vaccines anywhere? I've been working with Cheryl Rigby from the school and the president's school board, Mr. Chicoletti, trying to get the teachers their vaccine. I'm working with Lea to try to get Bristol Borough seniors their vaccine. So we're doing everything we can so everybody at home knows that this isn't something that, like Lea said, we're trying everything we can, but we have to follow certain procedures. But, you know, in our hearts, we want to take care of people in Bristol Borough first.
Absolutely.
So and then Lea, you can speak for that. I mean, you've seen me in a couple meetings that I wasn't shy from saying how I felt.
Absolutely.
Right, Lorena?
Yeah. You're a fighter.
Yep, yep.
So, but again, I, you can't imagine how hard these girls are working, how much grief they're putting up with every day, people screaming at them, I'm coming for a vaccine, you're going to get, I mean, it's a shame what they have to go through, but they're dealing with it. But I personally want to thank you for all you're doing because I know how, I've been at the hospital, I know how hard your work is to vaccinate everybody you can. And I know, we talked a lot about this, Lea.
Yep.
You would do everybody tomorrow if they would allow you.
Absolutely.
And so would Lorena, so again, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Can you just tell everybody how to register? Because you can call the hospital, but it really doesn't do
No.
any good doing it that way. So can you tell them publicly?
Right. So what we've been telling everybody to do is register on buxcounty.org. And then it kind of goes into a queue. And what happens is that since B-Chip is helping us, they'll get certain emails and then they'll call out and they'll say, they'll kind of schedule it with us and schedule it with the person. So that's the best way to do it. If, again, to your point, when you call the hospital, we're so bombarded that we don't have the time to just automatically tell you a date and a time. It has to
You don't even answer the phone over there anymore. That's how busy you guys are.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
On the saltwater
Yeah, I just have a question. Like, when you guys talk about the second dose?
Yes.
Is this, is the first and the second dose the same exact thing, it's just more of it?
It's the same exact thing. It's not more of it, it's the same exact thing. It's like the booster dope, bose, booster dose. So again, it's the same exact vaccine, same exact dose, and again, it's just the booster dose.
Okay. So we're basically, what you guys are doing is just hold it to make sure to get both doses instead of one and then having to wait?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Yep, yep.
All right, sounds good.
And that's been a problem with other sites. They may vaccinate, give you the vaccine, and then they can't guarantee the second shot.
Yeah, yeah.
So Lower Bux is doing what's right. They're making sure that you get your shot today, they schedule your appointment 21 days later and you get your second shot.
Exactly.
Okay?
I'd just like to thank the administrators. And when you go there and you see the doctors volunteering, the nurses volunteering, they're doing this in addition to their regular job.
Oh, yeah.
And it's not because they're getting paid for it or it's not, you know, federal government's supplying the vaccine and the material they need, like bandages and wipes and all. But the labor is all, right now, it's been all volunteer.
Yep.
And I thank you, thank you and your whole team for all you're doing for our community.
Yeah, really, thank you so much.
Thank you. For all your support, because that's what we need.
Say anything?
Thank you. No, thank you. Like, we are just here to serve you guys. The hospital is very committed with the community. We're doing this for you guys. As you mentioned before, if we were allowed to vaccinate everyone tomorrow, we would definitely do it. But we want to vaccinate and we want to give the two shots and make sure that if we give the first, we give the second one. And the only thing that I will ask is, if you have scheduled and then you have your first shot and your second shot, just be responsible because we have, when you open a vaccine, it have an expiration time. So just invite them to be responsible. Because if you are not taking your second shot, then you're missing a second shot or you're losing a second shot for another person. So that's the only thing. Like, this, it's time to take care of each other and love each other and try to finish this horrible block, right? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Do we have anybody for public participation? Joe, you don't do public participation, I'll come back here.
What's that?
Let me do public participation if we have anybody.
I don't have that much to be in with. That's it.
Nobody? Okay, that ends public participation. Mayor?
Couple things. We met with the chief earlier today. Chief's scheduled to meet with the NAACP this week regarding a county initiative that they are proposing through the Chiefs Association. They're going to be having a Zoom meeting to talk about community policing, which as you all know, we support 100%. Officers working the Super Bowl Sunday. We're treating the hoagies from Boy Scout Troop 11 out of Levittown. Want to thank them. Snowstorm brought no major issues. Thank you to the residents from Mill Street and Radcliffe Street for cooperating with the street clearing. Also, thank you to Raising the Bar for helping get the word out. Hoping that the Biden administration's executive order allows for more reimbursement on the COVID-19 issues. I know Ralph and Mr. Dillon, myself and the chief, and Chief Slack and Merle have been working on this because our initial request was reduced by more than 50% with the Biden initiative. They say that they're going to be paying 100% of the expenditures. Point-in-time survey was completed by the county two weeks ago. It's a survey of the homeless in our area. We assisted in identifying locations and specific individuals to the county. We do have a few homeless people living within the boundaries of the borough. Running down leads on possible suspects, the Radcliffe burglary and car theft. And we need, we have a need for an additional crossing guard. Just had a crossing guard substitute who quit and that was our last one, so.
Can I ask the mayor a question? Because it's just something that he had mentioned that I thought maybe I could down talk to. Is that right, sir? Do I ask him a question, the mayor a question?
Got it.
You had spoken about the homeless
Yes.
issue. You know, it seems like, first of all, obviously, no one wants to see anyone have to be homeless in this environment and the weather and COVID and everything. It seems like there's kind of a gray area near the canal as to how or who would enforce and/or help in that situation? And I know there is a small group that's back there. Is there, is there any remedy that we have for that or is there a way to get in touch with?
Yes. I'll let the chief talk about that. We've, we've reached out, we've worked with very various county agencies over the last couple of years and the chief
Are we talking about the homeless camps off the canal path?
Yes.
Yeah. We've been out, the outreach program, as we just talked, was out there last Wednesday. We specifically directed those people to those individuals. We've actually got commitments, I'm not sure if they're from actually those camps, but some other well-known individuals in town that are supposedly being housing come February 15th, which is fantastic, and a couple of them in hotels as we speak. It's a mental health issue.
Sure.
A lot of times, if not more importantly, most of the time, even though they go out of their way and they find the resources for these people, they end up back on our doorstep on Mill Street because that's where they want to be.
I know one, one, one of my constituents who lives across the track, you know, from the path, their big concern at night was the fire. And what, you know, what could be a byproduct of that, obviously. So just, just kind of do my
We're aware of it. And we're, like I said, we're working with various county agencies. Going back two years ago, we had around 16 people that we helped with assistance from the county in placing them. It's a real shame because some of these people are vets.
Yep.
We got some assistance for them and got housing for them. But on the flip side, as the chief mentioned, a lot of these people, they don't want help. They don't want to, you know, go into housing or anything like that and get stuff. It's heartbreaking.
Thank you.
Okay. Michael, do you have anything?
Just real quick, I just wanted to emphasize and visit again what Mayor Saxon already mentioned, that with the snow removal, especially on Mill Street, Radcliffe Street, and now, you know, the 100 block of Market, just be aware of that. That's just for your own benefit so that the public works can continue to do an excellent job that they've been doing to clear it out so that businesses and daily business people and shopping and things like that, daily routines could continue. Also, just be aware that sometimes if there is a crazy storm, we seem to be hitting, you know, a regular where they start on certain days. Just be sure to visit somewhere about the trash because in some cases, you know, it is delayed and we try to update that as much as we can. I know Mr. Dillon has been doing that and also Betty. Betty has checked into it and has cast the word. So that's all. I just wanted to already emphasize what Mayor Saxon had addressed. Thank you.
Just to speak on the snow, since we're on that, you got to give our borough crew a lot of credit.
Absolutely.
Because our streets are blacktop. A lot of people may not leave town because, you know, they're in town a lot, but if you leave Bristol, you realize how great our streets are compared to other
Absolutely.
towns and municipalities. But, you know, look, you're not going to make everybody happy. Everybody says, why is this street better than that street? They got a tough job. You drive a plow down some of these streets when you got a couple inches on each side, especially in Harriman, it's not easy. And you're pushing it, like they say, they keep pushing, fill my driveway. Well, I don't know where you want them to, they can't stop and lift and
Right.
So, you know, we do the best we can. Our guys are conscientious about what's going on and I think they're doing a great job.
Absolutely.
Dave?
Yes, thank you. Concerning the coming improvements on the Mill Street Basin parking lot, I just want to remind council that I call it the point, is where Silver Lake Creek and the river meet. People put their canoes and kayaks in that area. And it's the only viable place to put your canoe or kayak in because to the left is rocks, to the right at low tide is mud flats. So just if council could keep that in mind when we're doing the improvements, you know, it's the only place where the locals can put their canoes in and we should make sure they have access to that area. That's all I got. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple things. I guess the first I was waiting for is, Mr. Dillon, how is, how is he making out?
Fine.
And then how about Mr. Salerno? He hasn't been here the last couple of months.
Well, he's concerned with the virus. And I think until he gets two shots, I think he's not going to be showing up. But if you have any questions, you can email him anytime you want.
Okay.
Or give them to me and I'll get you answers.
All right. I guess the first question I have is the Grundy Foundation land development. Can you tell me, what, what is the Grundy Foundation land development?
They were here several times and did presentations in front of us. They're doing a lot of renovations at the library. So it's, they got to come in for land development and certain projects. So they're just asking for an extension on that. So we have to, just a formality to grant it.
Gotcha. And this is just for the, this is just for the area down there by the library?
Right.
Okay.
That whole area?
Library.
I don't know where else you'd be talking about.
Well, you're the one who said, you said the whole area. I said the area by the library, that's all you have.
But I'm saying not just, there's the left side of the library and the right side of the library.
Right, just all the area.
It's all right.
Okay. The next question is, where are we? Anything new going on with Elm Street and the Chestnut Street property?
Rebid meeting was mandatory that you showed up. The bids are due February 10th, I'm almost sure, to the redevelopment authority. Redevelopment authority, I think, meets on the 19th. And hopefully at that meeting, they'll award the contract for the demolition. And hopefully by the first week of March, Elm Street will be no longer standing there.
Gotcha. And then the second part, do we, is that something, that area, have we made any progress with the residents on Chestnut Street?
RDA is trying to reach out to them individually to see if they could set up a time that they're interested in sitting with the RDA, to see if they're interested in moving forward with the sale of their property.
And who would be the person they would be sitting down with when you say the RDA?
The head of the RDA, Jeff Darwick.
Okay.
And I think that the last time we spoke is that if we can't reach agreements, with, there's five owner-occupied properties and two rentals. I think they, we're going to have to make a decision as to demo everything we can and just leave them seven properties standing. And it happens all the time.
Just keep them around.
And just, yeah, fix the size of our, their house.
Okay. And what is new with the Rec Committee that you guys formed with the school district? Who, like, what is the goal of that and have we made any progress with?
There's been no meetings. Everything's so hard with this COVID, that there's been no meetings, nothing's been decided and no, Mr. Chicoletti, I formed the committee on the school board end. And I have formed the committee on our end.
Okay. Who's on, who's on the committee on our end?
Mrs. Cullen, Mr. Pezza, and myself.
I mean, being the person who's the biggest proponent of recreation, is there a reason why you left me off of that committee?
Because we can't work together. And I won't put you on a committee.
Okay.
So I'm publicly saying it, so I'm not hiding anything.
No, I appreciate that, honestly.
I don't like your, you know, that about it.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's better that way, I understand. Chestnut Street, the other question I had, I don't know if you're aware of, but we made a big deal about paying for monies to Mascaro because they were struggling so much. I don't, were you aware that, you know, maybe a month or so after we decided to pay them, you know, ahead of time, that they, they have accumulated $200 million in contracts during that time?
I don't know if that's true or anything.
I'm just saying, we were paying them forward and they have, they just had made some bids over $200 million worth of contracts, yeah. I'm just, I was just wondering if you were aware of it. And then the next question I have is for the chief. I don't know if we're talking to him at the next meeting?
No, he's here.
Okay.
Is the chief out there?
Here he comes.
Chief, I have a couple of questions for you. The first question I have is, what is the normal procedure for residents when they want to file a harassment charge?
It's depending on the individual case. There's not a normal procedure.
It's not a regular procedure?
No, it depends on the incident.
So what would, what would, what would be an incident that would change? Like, give me an example of something that would, what's the normal protocol for if an officer is called to a resident's house and they want to file harassment charges?
Well, it depends, again, on the incident, what the circumstances are surrounding it.
Okay. So a typical, so what would cause somebody to be sent a summary offense of harassment without talking to the other party that was involved? What would cause something like that?
Well, I'm not going to get into a political event here with which you want to make this. However, the event that you're talking about started back in June of last year. And it was a continuing event with the culmination of individuals being arrested. It became a safety issue. And there was multiple people involved in this particular event that we felt for a public safety event. Put it all before the district magistrate and figure it out there.
Okay. So the, when you talk about there have been incidents
Particular investigation, sir.
This is not an ongoing investigation, it's already over. I'm just
No, maybe it's not.
Maybe it's not, okay.
No, I don't know what's your aspect of it?
Well, my aspect is, I went over as a councilperson.
You want to go over and talk to me outside?
In, in public.
No, we're not.
Again, listen, here's the problem. The problem is, he wants to talk, and we've never had an issue, right? One of the, I was one of the biggest proponents of you, without a doubt. And what I liked about you was that you were upfront, transparent, and you ran it, the police department, the way we expect it. So like, to listen to people in the background, the mayor and the council president chiming and say, you don't have to answer questions, to me, I don't think that's fair for the residents, right? Because you need to have a clear idea of what's expected and what you can get done as a resident. If you're having problems in the community and you haven't, you know, with a neighbor or something and they want to, you know, they want protection, that they want to know, what do they have to do in order to file harassment charges? Because
So here it is, situation, as I told you, each situation dictates the actions we take. We probably deal with, I can't even say, 50 a year neighborhood disputes. And they continue at different degrees. And our involvement was, we always try to mediate, but as they continue and as the situation evolves, sometimes it turns evolves, sometimes it turns into where we feel it's more important if we don't have to make a physical arrest, and sometimes we do. If not, get it before our district magistrate and let it be resolved that way. So again, situation dictates our actions. There is no cookie cutter situation.
Okay, so what you're saying is, our officers aren't told, like, when residents complain about, you know, they're having problems with their neighbors, they're not told to go file papers down at the district court?
Every situation is different.
Every-
There's a thing about police work, Mr. Divine, it's called, excuse me, there's a thing about police work. It's called, unfortunately, discretion. And it's really not unfortunate, it's very fortunate because we have to react to certain situations in certain ways. And when situations escalate, we react one way. When we can't de-escalate a situation, as in this situation that occurred months over time, resulted in an arrest, brought in other agencies that were involved, other county agencies, this was getting out of hand. We put an end to it.
Okay, so the discretion that you, that you're talking about is when a councilperson who wants to try to get involved in a situation to try to mediate a situation, right? What would cause that councilperson to get a summary offense of harassment in the mail without any officer talking to said councilperson?
That was not what was relayed to us.
In what way? Who was relayed to you?
We're not going to talk about that in this investigation.
That is very important because-
Sir, as a, Mr. Divine, as we do, since you brought me on, since you hired me.
Yes.
What we can do is, we can have a conversation one-on-one and you can discuss everything that I've done through those steps, and I'll be more than glad to do that. And then if you want to take your political agenda-
There's no, there's no, there is no political agenda. Listen, there's no political agenda.
Are you going to let me talk because I let you talk?
Listen, when you say things like that, because now you try to make it into something that it isn't, right? It's not a political agenda. As a councilperson, I went over to mediate. Do you have any, like, seriously, did you believe that I went over there to harass anybody? Honestly, you've known me.
Mr. Divine, here's my situation. I'm asking you, can I answer?
Yeah.
Here's my situation as a law enforcement professional. I don't get to make that determination. I have to go on the feelings of how the individual perceived that event. So that individual brought a situation to us and said that they felt threatened and harassed. That situation encompassed a much larger situation, which is why we didn't want this situation to continue. So we did what we thought was appropriate and I believe it resolved. How you take the next steps, you went over there for whatever your purposes are, that's fine. You don't want to call it political, that's fine. But I'm going to tell you right now is, I was under as much pressure to not do something as to do something on both sides. I don't play that game and you know that. And that's why we handled it the way it did. We took it out of the police department's hands and we put it into the district magistrate's hands.
All right, well, that leads me to the next question.
The answer to this question.
That is, okay, mayor, are you speaking?
He recognized me.
Okay.
Are you speaking?
I'm speaking, I'm speaking to the chief.
Yeah, and the chief.
So if you could be quiet, I would appreciate it.
He recognized.
It doesn't matter if you recognize, I'm speaking with the chief.
I'm allowing the chief not to answer you because he has answered.
Because he is attorney.
He has answered.
I'm going to ask his-
You're asking him for a personal question.
These are not personal questions.
Something that you got cited for that was political.
These are personal questions. All right, listen. So again, is it, the next question I have, is it normal, is it a normal parent that a summary offense would be prosecuted by the Bucks County DA's office on a summary offense charge? Offense charge? Is that normal?
No.
No. Can you tell me why that would be in this case?
To remove the police department's involvement in it, to bring in an impartial person on their side to review the case and put the merits forward.
And who's, who's the one who asked for that?
I did.
Oh, okay, that's all I wanted to know. All right, thanks, chief.
You're welcome.
What else you got?
Anything else?
No, that's it, thanks.
Thanks, chief.
Done, Tony. Tony?
Yeah?
That's it, thanks.
Frank?
I just wanted to quickly, it was more for Mr. Dillon, but maybe you would know. The trash cans on the path are no longer. And at least my neighbor who walks her dogs every day said that they're gone. I didn't know if that was something that was temporary for the winter or-
There's trash cans, the permanent ones.
Yeah.
I think some of the ones that aren't permanent, we pick up.
Okay.
Even like down at, behind Riverfront North and all. Because they're turning them over, the kids are breaking them, they're too expensive.
Okay.
You know, we return all the trash cans in the spring.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Rain?
I just wanted to ask the mayor, have all the department and police department had the COVID vaccine, do you know?
Those that wanted it, I believe, have received it. I think there's still a couple on the list that are waiting for their second shot.
Okay, all right.
Thanks to the chief and Louie and some other people that were able to get all our people that wanted it, vaccination.
Okay. Also, I just wanted to wish Jim Dillon an early return and I'm glad that he's feeling better. That's it.
Louie?
Nothing, thank you.
I really have nothing either. Let's go to number three on the agenda.
President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the council meeting minutes for January 11th, 2021, accept the treasurer's report for December 2020, accept the police department report for December 2020 and January 21, accept the fire chief's report for December 2020 and January 2021, and accept the inspector's report for January 2021.
Second by Ms. Collin, questions or comments? Mr. Divine.
Yes, I'm just going to let, you know, I'm just going to vote no, not because I'm against it, I just didn't have a chance to look at it because I didn't get my packet. I'll check.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for extension on the Grundy Foundation land development from 21721 to 5521.
Second by Mr. Gorman, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Anything other than business? I have a motion adjourned by Mr. Pezza, second by Mr. Gerari.